Check, check one, two. Hello? Check.
Hello?
Check. Check what?
Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hello? Yeah, hung up. Well, I don't know if you're hearing through the fender.
Hello? How can you? Hi, Daddy, how are you?
Check, 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 check. Check one, two. Check, check. Check one, two, and two. Mic check two, mic check two. Check, check, okay. You have a problem with the gain or... Check one, two. Mic check four, mic check four. Good. Number five, number five, mic check five. Number five, check one, two, one, two, three, four. Check, check, check. Okay. Six, number six, mic check six. Number six. Check, okay. Number seven, number seven, check one, two. Good. Mic check eight. Eight, check eight, alright. Number ten, check ten. Check, number ten, alright. Number ten, check ten. Check ten. Check one, two, check one, two, one, two, three, four. Check one, two, check one, two. Check one, two.
Hello, Aleah.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
It was nice. How about yours?
It was really good.
Good.
Hi, Aleah Shaw. Thank you, here.
Thank you, how was your party?
It was good.
How was yours?
It was good. A lot of chum was very good scoring.
Here, camera.
What is this?
I don't even remember what that shit was.
I had to get a break.
Hi, Tyrone. It looks like Santa Claus visited you.
Say what?
I think Santa Claus visited you.
He came late, huh? Just for Tyrone.
I think he's, they said, "I open," and...
Well, up to the committee or the...
Right, so you'll just do the roll call?
Right. And after that.
Then I'll tell.
Aleah, Aleah, that lets me know you haven't been here on time.
You know, but at the same time, you know, the closer...
You're right here.
Once I got past New Year's, all my mind was on for the next few days is how much work is piling on?
Before you get out of college, we can teach you how to do the pledge of allegiance.
I don't know who that is.
That's what it did for.
We can help him out with that.
Said it looks really good.
Hey, Michael.
Oh, that's what you were thinking.
How's it going? Good, good to see you. Good, that's alright.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees, January the 15th, 2019. And now we'll be led in our pledge of allegiance by Aleah Shaw.
In just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, lucrative, and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Alright, now we'll have our roll call.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee...
Here.
Trustee McIntyre. Trustee Sutton.
Here.
Alright. Now may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Go move.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have recognitions and we are rescheduling, I'm sorry, audience to patrons and petitioners. Excuse me, I'm moving too fast. Anyone in the audience like to speak? Alright, recognitions that have been rescheduled for February the 19th to have a more involvement of our students. And Dr. Mosher would like to introduce someone to us.
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have a special guest with us here tonight. And we have Dr. Beth Ann Krieger, who is our incoming Vice President for Academic Affairs. And we're so glad she could come up this week. She came up for a convocation that we started yesterday with all the full faculty and staff. And will be here for the week and her official start date is January 31st. So welcome aboard.
I'll come up and party with you because that's my birthday. Alright, welcome, welcome. Thank you, and now turn it over to Dr. Mosher.
Very well. And we're now going to proceed to board appointments and assignments for the 2019 calendar year. And at this time, I'd like to accept recommendations for the position of chairperson nominations.
I'd like to nominate Rosalind Brown and just remind the board that we, I hope we talked about this last year at this time, that it's been a practice for some time now for the board to have a two-year assignment for the chair. And I know we talked to Ms. Brown last year about doing this. She agreed to do a two-year. And this will be the second year, so I'd like to nominate Rosalind Brown as the chair.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am happy to have my fellow trustees find confidence in me. And I'm looking forward to a great year. And as long as we continue to work together, I can be assured that that's going to happen because we have done this in the past. I do want to say Happy New Year to everyone that is in the room. We have not had an opportunity to do that. And welcome the faculty, staff, and students back to the campus. And I also want to say our president is doing a great job. And if I have, can say that I'll have the confidence of the board to say that we are behind him 100%. And we're looking for great things in 2019. Go Blue Devils.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify that we didn't nominate her just because you agreed to do it last year. We also want to point out that we think you have done an outstanding job as our chair.
Thank you, thank you so much. Alright, now we have the Board of Trustee assignments. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the assignments that we have and are willing to continue to serve where we have placed you this next year?
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we are looking forward to getting those committees continue to work and we're going to get started with the community engagement and we're going to look forward to some great things happening there. Assignments. A motion to approve the assignments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the trustee assignments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, now we are going to do the officers for the board. And the vice chairperson is, I nominate Ray Daniels to be our vice chair for this next coming year. Been moved and seconded that Ray Daniels be the vice chair for the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to thank Ray for being willing to accept that vice chair position. Thank you so much. And we have the secretary, Fraser. The secretary is...
I move Dr. Mosher as the secretary of the board.
Been moved and seconded that Dr. Mosher be the secretary for the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Mosher, for being the secretary. Alright, and our treasurer. Can I get a motion to have...
I move Mr. Mike Beach as the treasurer for the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Mike Beach be the treasurer for the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Beach, for being the treasurer. Alright. Alright, and we'll need to approve the second year for the McInney Van Cleve Phillips being our attorney for the board. Do I have a motion to approve this? Been moved and sectioned that we approve the attorney for the trustee board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for all the hard work that you have done. And we have a motion to, it's the freedom of information. And I will nominate Mr. Peter Gabriel. Like, can I get a motion for that? It's been moved and seconded that Peter Gabriel be the information officer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter, for considering to continue that job. And we also have the Wind Dot Echo as our community newspaper. May I get a motion to approve that for the Board of Trustees? Been moved and seconded that Wind Dot Echoes be the official newspaper for the Community College. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns about our new board for 2019? Thank you so much. Now, we will have our committee reports. Do I have committee reports at this time?
Well, I'll just tell you that we are preparing to make our annual trip to Washington DC next month, February 10th through 13th for the ACCT National Legislative Summit. And I think Dr. Daniels, Dr. Mosher, Dr. McIntyre, and me. And we have a student, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the student's name.
Manny.
So Manny. Manny's going with us too. And, yeah. So we have received final arrangements, preparations, and so we'll leave on the 10th and we'll be back on the 13th.
The Finance Committee met. Everyone was unable to be there. He had other assignments, so we did meet. And we did approve the pieces in the agenda that the Finance Committee looks like, looks at. And the recommendation for payment was the major thing. And we reviewed the budget and everything seems to be in good shape.
Any other question we want to talk about? Fact that we are going to get started?
Meeting soon and we all have some homework.
Any other questions or concerns? Thank you for the committee report. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Are there any major changes in academic calendar? Is it pretty much what it was this past year? Anything we ought to know about that's a major change? So no major changes? Thank you.
Just, also, the consent agenda, item D, the ones through, for HR. I did have some questions there. It shows Michael Bruner as a part-time lab assistant. And it shows his start date of July of last year. And it shows his pay as annually. And usually if they're part-time, it's hourly. So can you, and then he's also listed on there as part-time in the evening and as an instructor in the evening time in welding. And that's listed as an hourly rate. And so, we want to make sure that there's no overlap in the hours. I don't, I guess I don't understand if he's part-time, why is his salary listed as annual? It's on the page for new hires. At the top of the page, you see Samantha Scott, and then the next line.
Madam Chair, I'm going to move...
I'll have to check in.
Yeah, I'm going to move approval of the consent agenda and pulling that particular item off the agenda. It'll be looked at later. Otherwise, approval of the consent agenda minus that one particular issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D. And we take care of that at a later date. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion would be to approve everything except that one particular.
Yes.
So it'd be item D, everything except whatever...
That position?
That position.
Yeah.
Improve everything else.
Everything except that particular position. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then we'll move into the Senate, Student Senate Report. Aleah Shaw.
Hello. Okay, that's on. Hello, everyone.
Hello. Good evening.
I hope your breaks were good. Mine was pretty restorative, got a lot of rest, but I'm, I feel really good being back here. So it's nice to see you all. A lot of good familiar faces I've seen around campus. So just to get started, I do have a revised and updated 2019 spring calendar for student activities. And it's pretty comprehensive, easy to understand. We have a legend to showcase what the colors mean. So we have a lot planned, which is really, really great for this semester. And I also have another handout as well, which is specific to something we recently started within these past few years, which is the Student Leadership Workshops. And so, something interesting about that is that last semester, we had about 40 workshops, but now we have about 50, as well as adding in a few others. And something really, really cool about that too, is that some of them will be student-led. And I think that experience will be very, very important for our students, but also a great experience for those that will be within the audience as well. And so, our students are our executive team for Students in specifically and just students around campus have a lot of knowledge. For example, some own businesses, some may know about transitioning here to America from other countries. And so, there's just a lot of wealth of knowledge from students here. So we're glad we'll be able to sort of share that with the students and also including it within the leadership workshops in general. And if you just look through some of the great things we have this semester would be information about transferring to a four-year college, things about developing a co-curricular transcript, workshops specifically for plagiarism, just a lot of great things that just helped students not only practically, but also academically. So we're really excited about that and some of the events coming up spring semester. Additionally, while we were on break, our clubs were doing a lot of great things. For example, the Drama Club attended a theater conference to South Dakota with 15 students attending. The Spirit Squad were cheering at the women's basketball, basketball games during the semester. During the, our crew, which is the Christian Student Union, they attended a campus crusade for the Christ Conference in Fort Worth, Texas on January 1st to 5th. And so, we're doing a lot of great things even out of campus and out of classes. So that's really, really great. Some things coming up, for example, from the Student Nurse Association is that they're facilitating a pre-nursing special interest group for spring 2019. Some other things that'll be happening is our Gamer Club will be preparing for a GamerCon, which will be held in the spring on April 26th and 27th here at the college. And so, we have a lot of great things coming up for clubs, as well as things they do off-campus. So that's great to highlight. But just specifically going into our reports, I don't have a lot of changes to specifically talk about, but our executive team will be meeting on the 17th. And we'll just be talking about some great things coming up that we sort of always do every spring semester, which would be budget allocations. And so, something we're doing different with that whole entire process is that we're creating a budget rubric. And so, basically, it'll give the club budgets, what conferences to look for, what we're looking for, just to make the process go a lot faster. And it's so, it's just a lot more comprehensive for the clubs in general. And so, before they come and present the budget, they'll have something to look at and something to utilize, just to help them basically organize that information. And so, we're really excited to implement that because it's really important. It just saves everyone a lot of time because the budget hearings take up quite a bit of time for every single club and organizations, as well as special interest groups. And so, we're really great to, we're really happy to be implementing that. Another thing we're working on is Student Senate Meeting Engagement. So we sort of want to have more fun while also informative meetings. And so, we utilize things like the Hoot, which is like quizzes that specifically are about student senate, certain responsibilities that they have, different reminders coming up, just as a way to make it more engaging, but also still very worth their worthwhile. Like, it's very important and integral, like, to the success of the club. So we want to make sure that they're getting something out of it, as well as still retaining a lot of the good information that we give during those meetings. And so, upcoming events for clubs, for example, during the spring semester would be Ralph Bunch Society and Students for Global Peace. They're actually hosting a Model United Nations and the theme of transitional justice. And so, we're going to be really, really excited to collaborate with them and help them in any way. This is something they've been working on since last spring semester. So I think it's really, really going to be a good, it's going to be a good event, as well as just being there to aid them. Another great thing that I'm always excited for is elections and election preparation. I'll be speaking at a few classes and recruiting people and talking to them about student leadership, specifically in Dr. Tucker's classes, her 7:00 AM class, so wish me luck. And we'll be talking about elections, you know, getting everything together for that and just letting them know about student leadership. So I'm very thankful that she gave, she has given me that opportunity to be able to go and recruit while in that classroom. I'm happy about that time, though. Conferences, we have clubs and executives traveling during the spring semester. MumbleTac is one that OKU S Diversity Club typically goes on. Another conference that happens is the ACCT, which is Manny, who will be joining you all. He is a freshman here at the college. He is also a student ambassador and he also is a senator here on Student Senate. One thing that's great about Manny specifically is that one of the legislatures that you are going to see there, he has recruited and worked for her before. So he does have sort of a personal relationship, as well as we invited her and he was in one of the clubs that helped engage with her. So he does have some, a relationship with one of the senators that are there. So, we're Congress, the Congresswoman that is there. So that's great to know as well. And so, we're really, really excited for him. I was able to go last year. There were so many great things. And what I love most about ACCT is that it really helps you define your connection to community college, while also just showcasing what your narrative is and being able to bring that information back to your college to improve kind of where we are now and also showcase what's happening on the national level. So it's really, really exciting that a student's still able to go. And another thing we'll be talking about on the 17th are just general spring semester goals. A lot of us are going to actually be graduating. And so, because, I know I'm excited. But with that, we'll have to replace those that are leaving. And since we have senators that are there, we're going to make sure that they're well-prepared for the positions, make sure everything's okay. And so, just to fill those spots and really get ready for the fall. And so, we're really excited to have a good group of senators here and that are freshmen that'll be staying to build up that leadership. So they have that experience now. They are consistently here on campus helping us. And so, we're really, 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 really thankful for that. And we're excited about the leadership and the basically, I guess, the seed that we planted for good leadership to grow. And so, I think that's all that I have for you all. Before I forget, does anyone have any questions?
Would you like for me to go to your 7 o'clock class?
Um, I don't, I don't have a 7 o'clock class this semester, thankfully. But if you want to come along with me when I'm in a 7 o'clock class talking about elections, I wouldn't mind. But, no, no, no. My schedule's actually not as early this semester, so I'm thankful for that too. Thank, very thankful. Any other questions?
Please, real quick, congratulations on the Leadership Institute. That looks really good.
Yeah.
Who leads the conference? Who leads the sessions? Students or faculty or who?
Faculty, as well as other, I think, believe staff as well. They typically lead it, for example, Alicia Hooks and Nat Turner, or examples of, are some of the people that have led the workshop specifically, as well as faculty and staff here on campus, this main campus that have led the institute. So it's actually typically not students. It's typically faculty and staff that come in and talk about their area of expertise, while also just giving good information to the students. So that's why we're really excited for students to sort of lead that. Yeah.
Well, thank you to them for doing it. It looks like a really good program.
Any other questions? Can you see the growth that this young lady has had in the last two years? Oh, my goodness. Congratulations. And we knew you were going to graduate. We expected that.
That's right.
Thank you, thank you. I, my parents expected it too. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to accept the student's report?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Student Senate Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great job.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking forward to seeing you later in life. All right. Now we'll have our President's Report.
All right. Wow, what a great report. And it's so good to have you back. And we'll get the rest of the students here next week, but love the energy that you bring. It's very exciting. You're doing a terrific job. I'm going to start first with the resolution that we have. And this is a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA Whereas Kansas statutes anointed 41-719C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property, except where expressly permitted by law. And whereas Kansas City Kansas Community College, KCKCC, is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41-719C, specific, specified property which is under the control of the KCKCC Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore, be it resolved by the KCKCC Board of Trustees. Section 1, exemption for the following dates in 2019, from 12 o'clock noon to 1:00 PM noon. Wednesday, January 30th. Wednesday, February 20th. Wednesday, March 6th. Wednesday, April 17th. Wednesday, May 1st. In the location of Upper Jewell, from the requirement of KC, KSA 41-719C, Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the celebration of Mass for the Catholic students of Kansas City Kansas Community College, passed and approved by the Board of Trustees of KCKCC on January 15th, 2019.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, very good. So, boys, it's glad, it's good to be back from the holidays and I hope everyone had a very wonderful holidays, got to spend time doing things that they enjoy. We came back with all full faculty and staff this week and kicked it off with a convocation yesterday that I think it was really exciting and really engaging with our faculty and staff. We started off with some of the fall 2018 accomplishments. And I know we've touched on many of those here, but just, just to highlight, there are so many. We were named one of the best places to work in Kansas City last year by Zippia. We have three staff that were selected. That's Sean Darrett, Michael Cozart, and DC Broyle as 2018 Black Achievers and will receive award on Thursday night. We launched the new Veterans Center and have already seen 485 students, which is incredible and wonderful to see. With our athletes, 50% of them have greater than a 3.0 GPA, which is great work by our faculty and our coaching staff. We've got a new website, the new marquees, and the list just goes on and on. So, so many good things happening and we're just excited to keep that momentum up and bringing that into 2019. We also talked about some of the college updates, things that are taking place around campus, and opportunities for the future. And we have many of those coming up. How we need to really drive to innovate. We're going to do things, do some things differently than what we've done in the past. And we're going to take some real strategic risks. And that's okay. We talked about it's okay if you fail, right? We learn from it. We pick ourselves up. We wipe ourselves off and we get back and we do it again. So it was a really good day. We also talked about shared governance. And the President's Extended Cabinet worked a lot this last fall semester to work on the guiding principles of shared governance and what procedures we use when we implement shared governance. So I'd like to pass these around for your review. So that when you have an opportunity, you can see where we are with shared governance. And please feel free to connect with me if you have any questions. So we release this to the, all college employees and we're asking for their feedback to be provided to their Senate leadership, who will bring it back to President's Extended Cabinet. We also introduced a new suggestion box. So if you go to the KCKCC website, kckcc.edu, just go to the very top where it's very public, very visible, and you'll see a new link up there called suggestion box. We have so many great people in the working, you know, on the front lines with our, with our students and our community. We want to know how we can improve because we want to be an institution of continuous quality improvement. So we have that there. We have so many great people in the working, you know, on the front lines with our, with our students and our community. We want to know how we can improve because we want to be an institution of continuous quality improvement. So, we have that there and it's open to the, the public as well. And we want to incentivize innovation. So, if people submit a suggestion and it really enhances how we serve our students and it increases the effectiveness and the efficiency of the institution, we'll give whoever suggested that idea a hundred bucks. So, we are serious about innovation and moving forward. And then our big announcement, so we've been working with USD 500 and Superintendent Dr. Charles Faust on, on how we can work together to better serve some of the areas of our service area that are not being served as well as they are. So, we made the announcement that as of fall 2019, KCKCC will be offering college-level courses to the community and will be offering those classes out of Wyandotte High School after they're done with classes for the day. So, afternoons, evenings, perhaps a weekend college. We're going to see what that looks like. College credit, developmental education. We're working to get funding for ESL and GED as well because there's a community down there that really needs our help and we want to be there to help them. So, that's great, exciting news. It is the legislative season, so we've been working and I know with many of you have been going and speaking with our legislative delegation during this last week. On Thursday is the Higher Education Day at the Capitol, so we will be there with a table and some signage. And this, what I handed out is, if you can share amongst yourselves a little bit, it is a scaled-down version of one of the posters that we'll be sharing with our legislators. And it says basically, it's simple. Education plus employment equals a better Kansas. Kansas success. So, looking forward to moving that forward. We'll talk about our strategic plan a little bit later. And then also just one quick follow-up and others may have additional information. Last month, the board graciously approved the college to offer in-state tuition for students who lost their educational pathway through Vadorot College. And I believe at this date, we have served at least and admitted 24 students from Vadorot to KCKCC to help them complete their degree. So, really proud of the work that our faculty and staff have been doing on that. And one other thing on the student activities calendar, you'll also notice we talked in another, in another meeting, this calendar does have the pending ceremonies for PTA and RTA. So, that is Tuesday on May 21st for Respiratory Therapy Assistant and Physical Therapy Assistant. And that is the end of my report.
All right. Any questions or concerns?
Doctor, thank you for the report.
Yes.
If you would, you mentioned it briefly, but if you could expound a little bit more, we actually had a breakfast with the Wyandotte County delegation. If you could just maybe expound on, on your thoughts and the presentation you gave, I think what really stood out to me at that meeting was you had some statistics that were really eye-opening. When we talk about moving or at least expanding the service that this college provides into areas where the resources needed the most at Wyandotte High School to give better access to those that might not have access to this college and improve ability to do so. But you had some real good statistics. I don't know if you have those today or some that you can remember.
Sure.
Of why that's so important when you talk about the eastern portion of our city. And I'd like to commend you being new and recognizing that need and coming in and at least opening that door of opportunity to help improve the destiny of people in Wyandotte County that need an education, probably more so than most, if you, if you talk about that.
Sure, thank you, Trustee Garner. So, you know, when I began at the college, at KCKCC, I'm a big data person, so I'm looking at what is the educational attainment of our community and the people who live here across the community. And I was, and I, when I was doing that research and I look at educational attainment and I look at employment and I look at annual income and a variety of economic and socioeconomic factors, I knew there was disparity between the western side of the county and the eastern side. But when I really got down and digging into the, the details, that disparity is very great. If we look at educational attainment, there, first let me say, 55% of the jobs in Kansas are what we call middle skills jobs. So, it requires more than a high school education and less than a four-year degree. Well, that, basically, they're saying, community college, they need a community college education. If we're over on the western side of the state, it's in the high 30%, but when we get over on the eastern side and really down into that urban core of a downtown city, we're at in some zip codes and in some voting sectors, less than 10%. The average around that area is probably about, it's 17%. So, I took a circle and I put it around kind of the downtown area and then, and mapped out the five zip code region. And if we look at educational attainment in that area, it is, it's 83% of the population has less than a two-year degree. Well, how are we going to compete as a county and as an area? But how are those people, even more importantly, how are those people going to survive on a livable wage? Well, right now, they're not because a high percentage of those people are working full-time and living in poverty. So, my question was to everyone, why are we not there? So, we will be there. I mean, we are committed to the community. We're committed to the people that live here. And we're going to be looking at what classes do we offer? What type of technical training do we offer? What type of other social and wraparound services that we offer to help bring up the educational attainment of the people who live on the eastern side of the, of the county? And that will help everyone. And really, the most important thing and my belief is it helps put an end to generational poverty. Because as I say, education plus employment equals success. Success for everyone. So, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to, to go down there and we've got great faculty and staff as we announced that, that are just as excited and really, ready to get down there and to help as well. So, I appreciate all that. I appreciate you asking to really to kind of tell more of that story because it's really important to what we do as a community college. We are really here to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. And that's really profound when you talk about just the disparities that exist. And I've always said it, you know, to improve hope, opportunity, and improve the destiny of people, you have to go where they're at. And so, I thank you for having that vision to at least provide that service that I know that we've got great faculty and staff here can provide to some of those folks down there that want a good education, at least giving them an improved opportunity to, to have that, that, you know, that service available. And then also, the second question is the daycare.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just update us on that and where we're at? And that was one of the things that stood out to me at that, that breakfast was just about everyone in the room mentioned early childhood education and the importance that is when we talk about the success of our young folks from the cradle to prosperity. And that's really what it's all about. And so, I know that we have made a commitment to have these committees to at least explore the opportunity to reopen our facility hopefully and, and provide that opportunity to those that want to get a good education and need, need childcare. So, if you could just bring us up to speed on that. And one, before you do that, and I know you're going to talk about where we're at and, and what the, moving forward, you know, what you'd like to see and, you know, based on the spirit of this board. But I think one thing that's left out of that equation is, is we talk about childcare, but as we move forward, I'd really like for the committee to really think about how can we make the childcare affordable when we talk about those that are most in need in this county, that don't have the financial means always to afford childcare. And so, it's just not providing a service, but making it affordable for those that, that may be struggling financially, that want to get education and pull themselves out of poverty to get the jobs they need and have that service to be able to get the education that will get them there.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for that question. So, we, we have the committee that is working on developing a plan to, if everything works out, to reopen the childcare facility for the fall 2019 class. So, where we are in the process is the, the committee is putting together what we call an RFP, a Request for Proposals. Where a planned date to have, and an RFP really just describes what is the college looking for, what are the services that we would like to see provided in the center and what will we provide. So, we're looking to publish that to the, RFP to the public on February 25th. So, then that goes out and we will help spread the word for businesses and entities and social organizations that are involved with childcare to let people know if they're interested to apply. We'll gather those proposals back and evaluate them for the services that they can provide. The cost of care will also be a factor. We're working and having conversations with the Family Conservancy and other organizations that have access to grant money to help get, to get it started and to help bring down the cost if certain type of childcare services are rendered within the center. One of the other things that we'll be looking at in the proposal is, as a college, we're willing to decrease the lease rate for the facility in return for some reduced cost. First to the, the students who are KCKCC students who have children that would use that center and the faculty and staff. And then we would see what other kind of pricing models they might have so that the childcare is affordable. Because when you ask people, why can't you get an education? Two of the most common answers, childcare and transportation. So, we're really, we're taking that into consideration quite a bit. Around April and May, we'll be making some preliminary decisions with a preliminary intent in April and then a final execution of a contract in the very end of May. And that would be a contract between the college and the service provider. And that would give them the okay to start moving in and making adjustments to whatever they need inside with a target open date of August 1, 2019. So, that puts that about three weeks prior to the beginning of the school year. With that, we will be making, you know, we'll, we'll be evaluating these proposals and looking to see what is the best for the, the people and the children who live in our area, making sure that it's available, that we can do that. One of the things that, I mean, one, that we're working on right now is an evaluation of the current facility by the accrediting agencies for childcare facilities and what needs to be done and how much does that cost. The, the college and the board has been generous in approving a preliminary budget of $130,000 to remodel. That budget is based on primarily materials and not labor. So, that's one thing that we're looking at. If, we need to be able to have the, the employee power within our facilities and maintenance group to do these renovations, to keep that cost down. Anything that has to go out, the work done by someone besides the college, you will double that rate. So, in, in quick numbers, if someone else did the whole thing, instead of $130,000, it would be $390,000. So, we, we're trying to make all that work so we can do as much internal as we can and beginning as soon as we can to make that timeline. So, there are a lot of things still that are, that are in the works and for consideration, but it is truly our desire and our goal to have the facility reopened and to be serving the, the people in our community with very high-end childcare services and facility.
Okay, thank you. Just one last thing. Thank you, Doctor. Just, I'll close. The Wyandotte County delegation, they spoke to us and really, they brought in all the school districts in the county, I believe. And the one thing that stood out for me at, at the breakfast is they're really open to enhancing and improving education. What, as we all realize, education, if we're going to improve the dynamics and the prosperity of people in Wyandotte County and change the dynamic here, it starts with education. That's my personal belief. And there was some promising information coming out from our governor, the new governor, some of the comments that have been made about reinvesting in education. One of the things that I would like for the public to share for all of those that are within sight and sound of me listening is, please call your legislators. Let them know that education is important. Right here at Kansas City Kansas Community College, we've got teachers ready to teach and we've got people in this community that are eager to learn. But we have to make sure that we have the funding available to be able to do things such as the opening the, the, the early childhood education center, enhancing the partnerships that we have with our high schools, with the Diploma Plus programs where our, our high school kids can at least get close, if not have a, a two-year degree before they graduate from college. These are programs that are really vital. And so, I encourage the public to really, number one, support the Kansas City Kansas Community College because we've got great teachers, we've got great staff here. And, and reach out to your legislators and let them know that, that education is a priority, not just for this board, but it should be a priority for everybody in this community if we're really going to see Kansas City, Kansas and Wyandotte County move to where we all know it, it should be. And that's a, a great place to live, work and raise a family. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any sort of comments?
I attended the delegation a week ago on the 7th. Dr. Mosher was with me and I think, I'd like to say that we had very positive, a very positive acceptance down there. And Dr. Mosher did a quick little review of how we contribute to the Wyandotte County community economically with what we do at the college. And we were very well welcomed and appreciated, I would say. And thank you for doing that, that presentation last Monday night.
All right. And I thank the, all the trustees that went on Monday and those that went with us on Friday. We appreciate you taking time to meet with your legislators. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just mentioned that we've been very fortunate with our legislative delegation in Wyandotte County, or various, with the exception of perhaps one. Otherwise, our delegation is very supportive of education, have been for years. So, it's a matter of saying thank you. I agree with Tyrone that every time you get a chance to talk to them about how important education is, we really have a delegation in Wyandotte County that is very supportive of education, K-14. So, we're pretty fortunate here in Wyandotte County with the delegation we have as compared to a lot of the other places in the state. So, not only tell them how important it is, tell them thank you for their support.
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the president's report?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the president's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. That was really exciting. It's great to see Dr. Mosher and Dr. Faust already working together so that we are going to turn this community around. All right. And now we'll have a report from the Marketing and Community Outreach Officer, Mr. Tammy Bartunik. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. You have the fuller part in front of you, but just to highlight a couple of things. Snapchat, we started using Snapchat last year in a more thoughtful way. And as you can tell, on the first page, we had over 8,000 users. And I also want to say, that's with two filters currently running. So, running two different filters, 8,000 uses and 377,000 views of our filters. So, I think that's pretty amazing. Big success with that. And to add just some details to Dr. Mosher's comments about these students from Vadorot, the first Facebook post that you have there, my report, shows one of our attempts to reach out to students from Vadorot. That particular post had a reach of twenty, about a little more than 2,600 people. And out of that, we had 102 folks that actually clicked through from that post to the website for more information. And as Dr. Mosher highlighted, about two dozen actual enrollments. So, we're really happy that we can help those students, hopefully from Vadorot. We'd love to help all of them finish their education. Our signs that are going up, well, that are up. Our signs that are going up, well, that are up, on college and parallel and state avenues are awesome.
They are.
So cool. With, we posted, as those were going up and as they once were finally erected, we had over 2,200 people look at that post, so tells me that our community is excited that we have those up and running as well. So once we start getting them scheduled and running and get the software bugs worked out, we'll be posting some snapshots of what we're running on our signs on Facebook as well, so it'll be fun. Stay tuned. And then, I did give you some kind of annuals on, I think it's page three or four, but in a nutshell, all of our social media is substantially up from this time last year till when I wrote this report in December. So we have an up in Facebook views, YouTube, Twitter, Instagram, and LinkedIn, and I will say LinkedIn is our weakest, and we're going to build a plan how to better use LinkedIn with what we're doing here, but we really just started to dabble in that the last, like, year or so, so it'll take us a little time to work out those bugs, but still, everything is up, so I'm really happy to see that. We're getting more engagement, we're getting more views, and we're getting more click-throughs. So all of that is positive for us. And then, I wanted to highlight, of course, that we are having our Hall of Fame event. Can anyone tell me what day it's on? April 27th, very good. So if you haven't got your tickets or bought your table yet, there still is time. We're still looking for our lead sponsor, that is a $10,000 ask, so if you know of anyone, friends, neighbors, colleagues, business owners, partners, have them give me a call, because we still have that one spot open. And then, I also wanted to highlight as a recap, for 2018 school year, we awarded 181 scholarships from the foundation totaling over $174,000. So, so pleased that we could do that. And throughout our fundraising for last year, 2018, since July 1 of 18 through December, the scholarship fund through the Family Fund Campaign, the Giving Tuesday, Ken Lighting, and also private contributions increased over $130,000. So, just a couple highlights, I welcome questions, as long as they're brief, just kidding.
Any questions or comments?
Are you going to include the president's blog on your social media traffic?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
We're watching it. We got our eyes on it.
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll have a report from the academic affairs report, Mr. Ed Kramer.
Hi, good evening, trustees. I think you have my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, give you a little bit of highlight of things faculty are back, and had our convocation, as Dr. Mosher said, and had our adjunct meeting last night, had probably about 85 adjuncts here, and had sessions for them in professional development, set things forward for them for the pace. Deans and I met today, looked over classes and see where we're needing adjustments and meet about that, and that took us right up till the start of the board meeting. It's a great day of enrollment, so we're, we're doing good with that. And we had our faculty, excuse me, we're working on assessment this morning, doing course mapping, not so much course mapping, but I guess they're mapping courses to the program learning outcomes, which took quite a bit of the morning, and they've been spending quite, quite a time on getting our assessment efforts set for the upcoming semester, so. And I would answer any questions you might ask.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for carrying the torch all this time as our interim VP, so thank you for a job, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I did, on the curriculum changes, it says for your review, that doesn't mean, does that mean the board review? We don't, we don't vote to approve those, do we?
Which, which one?
It's the curriculum changes, nursing.
Oh, yeah, you, you are voting that you're in favor, I mean, that they're fine with you all, because generally no, there's not, it, it's more if we were offering, because this is a change to the program, it's been approved through Kansas Board of Nursing, but we're keeping you aware of it, and...
It's really not our approval, is it?
Kansas Board of Regents looks at it as that, in case there's a financial commitment that you need to be made aware of.
Okay.
There's not so much here, I mean, there's, there's cost for a new curriculum and the training we're doing with it, but it really is just continuation of the nursing program, but...
Yeah, because the board, you know, the board's expertise on that.
But we have to have, we have to have minutes that they came through here so that you're aware of it. It's really more, we've been putting all academic policy changes through to you, the ones where it would be big would be if we were starting a new program.
Yeah, yeah.
And in that case...
But it technically is our final approval that approves these?
Kansas Board of Regents wants to see that, we have to actually wait two months so that we have the approved minutes of the board meeting that they were presented there.
So, do we accept or deny we need approval?
Yeah, I did, so if we, when we approve your report, we're approving these?
Yes, that is correct.
That's what we're saying.
I might recommend, because the reports are accepted, they're not necessarily approved, so I would do an acceptance of the report with an approval of the curriculum revisions provided.
That's good. I'll make that motion.
What he said.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the report with the approval of curriculum. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to make sure we say it right so that we can give it...
Right, it's clear as mud, right?
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So we'll accept the report and move to...
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
The student affairs report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Great, so you have the student affairs January report in front of you, but I do want to go back and provide you a little more detail and a follow-up for a couple of questions that we had from December. So, in the report in front of you for January, I kind of gave you a little bit of a description about the early alert system. So I just wanted to kind of follow up, the early alert system is, it's a homemade system that we kind of came up with and made here in the college. It was put together by Amanda Williams and our retention coordinator, Scott Kramer. It is an electronic system, which is a form that faculty members or staff are able to fill out at any point in the semester, kind of sharing their concerns regarding a student, and it could be for a variety of reasons. So when they submit their report, they can click on the student hasn't been showing up to class, or the student's failed his third exam, whatever the case is. That referral goes, it was going to our retention coordinator, Scott Kramer. Once he would receive the referral, he would work, he would reach out to the student and work out, work with any of the other offices to try to provide him services, right? So if it was regarding tutoring, we would make sure that we were putting, connecting them with the learning commons to make sure the student was getting tutoring. If it was something that was, you know, mental health or a physical concern, we would make sure we would connect them with our resources, with the counseling and advocacy, or with our student health center. So, moving forward, we are going to continue to do the early alert system. There's a couple of things in there that we want to tweak and kind of change a little bit, just so that we can get, you know, better data. While Scott Kramer is no longer with us, because his, his last month was in December, Dr. Terry and the Student Success Center and the staff and the Student Success Center, and in particular, the Student Success Advisors are going to take over those responsibilities, and they will be the ones who will receive the referral, the early alert referral, and they would reach out to, to the students. Any questions so far about, about that?
So there is a personal contact, if you give...
There is a personal contact. Now, it's not always reciprocated, right? So there's a personal contact, an email, or a phone call, that doesn't necessarily mean that the student always returns the phone call or comes back in to, to see you. Yeah. In the month of December, the retention report said that we had zero early alerts, and I think Trustee Sutton had asked, "Wow, zero, why did you have, you know, zero?" And that was, I wanted to make sure I emphasize that that was only for the month of December, not for the entire fall semester. So it was, the report could be a little misleading, because you saw total numbers of withdrawals, for example, and those were for the entire semester, and then you only saw a zero for the early alert. So that was only for the month of December. If you think of the purpose of an early alert, you're probably not going to get a lot of alerts, for example, in August, because that's when classes first start, so by the time we come to the board meeting, there's not really that many, if any, alerts have been done for the month of August. Same with the month of December, because that's the very end of the semester, and by then, the faculty usually is not reporting, reporting early alerts, is not early anymore in that case. So, really for fall, September, October, and November, is when you, we would see most of the early alerts. And going back to the reports that we submitted, there was at least 100 early alerts that were submitted online in the fall semester.
I do appreciate you going back, clarifying that information, and I do have some additional questions about it. Of the administrative withdrawal, it shows there was 583. Now, how did that process work? I know how it works, but what I mean is, for the early withdrawal, was it just mainly based on the professor's syllabus for how, if you don't show up, you're, or, or did it go through a process? For example, if it was, if they were getting ready to withdraw them, did they just withdraw them, or did they do an early alert first, or?
Okay, yeah, so for the fall 2018 reasons for withdrawal, I gave you a little chart of some of the top 20 reasons why in that semester students withdrew. So we pulled data with the help of Chris Day and Dr. Terry, just to be able to look at what are the main reasons. So, the first, that overall, we had 1,646 withdrawals. Those are duplicated numbers, because it's not per student, it's per course, right, for per class. Out of that, 1,005 students withdrew from at least one class in the fall semester. So when you look at the chart, it tells you that there was 583 administrative withdrawals. So, I did a little research to find out exactly what is an administrative withdrawal, and an administrative withdrawal is when the student is withdrawn by the faculty, so it's initiated by the faculty member, they submit a withdrawal form to the registrar's office, student necessarily doesn't know right on the spot that they're being withdrawn, because most of the time they're doing an administrative withdrawal because of excessive absences. So if the student has not been showing up to, to the class, there is a, an administrative withdrawal can happen, and so that's what I understand is the, you know, the main reason. So I know I have the academic deans here, if anybody wants to share any other reasons that you know why the faculty might be submitting, you know, administrative withdrawals, but that is really kind of the case. Now, it doesn't tell me why, right? It just tells me that they withdrew them for administrative withdrawal, but it doesn't give me any more details. So one of the things that we can do is maybe consider changing the form to go back and get more detail as to why were they withdrawn, and then also to get a little more information about, was there a follow-up? I cannot tell you if the faculty member reached out to that student, because I don't know. They could have, they could have sent emails, and they could have made phone calls, I mean, I would, I would think that that's possibly the case, right, that they're trying to reach out to the student first before they go ahead and completely withdraw them from the course, but I can't, you know, without sincerity, tell you that that's exactly what's going on, because I don't have that, that data.
Or, or even if they're not able to contact them, give it to the retention early alert person, because that all works together.
Right.
And then I guess the other thing I was thinking about in that is, I think, you know, if we could, I'll use this term, if we could catch them before they fall. There's other areas, for example, in the financial aid satisfactory progress, if you can see that students are failing in that area, is that's another area that we could reach out to try to say, "Okay, this student isn't making academic progress," or, I'm just looking at ways that we can help with this. And then the other one is students requesting accommodations, because whether it's a learning disability, or, or hearing, whatever it might be, if there's some way that we can wrap around these services, as I said, catch them before they fall, we see that this may, or even if they took their placement test, and they scored really low, but they still are just skirting, getting into those classes, perhaps, and we don't want to make them feel like they can't make it, but somehow, reach out to them in a gentle way, I think, in saying, "We care about you, we want you here," and if we can do wraparound services like that with this retention, I think we can reduce those numbers, but that's just something I think we should shoot for, because we get them here, but we need to find ways to keep them, because a thousand is still too many.
Right, no, completely agreed, and I think that that's something that we definitely need to really sit down and, as a college, look at, what are the strategies that we can do in the classroom and outside of the classroom, and really get a good retention plan in place that we can be all committed to, to hopefully see, and get some data off of it, right? See, you know, is there anything that we can do to kind of catch those students, you know, early on? If you look at the, at the chart, it gives you a little more information about, you know, personal reasons. Those, we don't really know what their personal reasons are, that's just one of the options on the withdrawal form that they pick. So maybe we can consider changing that to see if they're willing to give us a little more, you know, a little more information. Any questions about early alert or the reasons for withdrawal? Is that kind of clarified? Trustee Sutton, your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with Trustee Sutton, that, I guess what raised an eyebrow for me, and should be a concern to all of us, is you look at the administrative withdrawals, I mean, that's the number one reason why we're withdrawing our students, and I think there ought to be some, not just an early alert, but there should be an audit, hopefully, that would be put in place to look at the teachers, to just ensure that we're doing everything we can from a, from the teaching staff, to make sure that we're just not brushing some of these students aside, and that we're doing everything we can to keep them enrolled here, and to help them be successful and to graduate, or, you know, get their, get their certification, or for whatever reason they're here. I mean, I look at the top three reasons, and the top number one reason is because staff is kicking them out, can't do anything about personal reasons, which is, but the third reason is, they're falling behind. And so, you know, two out of those three are really concerning, and I think, I agree with the trustee, that that's something that I think we really need to take a hard look at, and it's something that we could work on to improve to make sure that none of our students get left behind.
Right.
If I could add a little more clarity to that as well, though, if you look across the nation, the number one reason for withdrawals, especially, a lot of these are the first-year students, is an administrative withdrawal. And being in the classroom for 15 years myself, I can say that the majority, if not just very near, all of the faculty are making attempts to reach out to those students before they are withdrawn. So there are phone calls being made, there are emails being sent, there are conversations that take place in the classroom with a friend of the student who is no longer showing up for class, and there are multiple interventions that take place before an administrative withdrawal is done, and that's just kind of the process of how those go. So there's a lot of work done by the faculty for that, so I just want to make sure that we just understand what that whole process is before an administrative draw, withdrawal is given, and in many cases, that withdrawal is being made on the student's behalf so that it protects them from receiving Fs for classes that they are no longer showing up for. So there's a protection nature of the faculty to make sure that we're not harming the students for a class, that they're no longer attending, attending. The second is the same as what we have, and it is for personal reasons, and they'll say that it's for personal reasons, they won't go into details. It's usually personal reasons, and the number one personal reason are finances. So there's a lot of things that, it's, it's typical across the country, and the population of the students that we serve, it hits very close to home as well. And Dr. Wilson and I were speaking earlier this week or last week, and we have a strategic, strategic enrollment plan. The beginning of it is focused on recruitment and bringing students to the institution, and moving forward, we're going to be working on the retention and the completion agenda for that. The national average for retention of full-time, first-time students at a community college of a like institution, our peer group of about 25 institutions across the country, the average retention of those first-time, full-times is 61%. Not that I want to be average, I never want to be average, right? People who know me know, I do not... People who know me know, I do not, average is, average is not acceptable. But we're at 60%. Where we are falling, falling down a little bit, and what we need to do some more research on, is our first-time, part-time students. Our retention there, I believe, is at 30, 37%, and we're about 8% behind the national average. And then our completion, we're about 3% behind the, the national average for completion. And again, I will never, you never want to tell your kid, hey, grow up, and you can be average. No, 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 no. You can be right on top. So there are just a lot of things that are being done. We do, we do have some work to do, but there are a lot of steps that take place before an administrative withdrawal is assigned.
And that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
I wanted to be sure that we had a formalized process before we got to an administrative withdrawal, as opposed to something that's subjective to an individual teacher without guidelines. And I think you've answered that question, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And I would like to say, in the words of Don Stumpf, whenever you administratively withdraw someone, that is where you begin recruiting and academic planning for the next semester at that point. And he was our registrar for, how long? 35 years? But he would say, start academic planning now for that student, because, you know, they may have these things, but statistically, many students will come back as soon as they get stuff worked out. And so with supportive resources and that exit interview, then we're doing just about as much as we can to help that student out.
And having been in, in the classroom here myself, I do understand the administrative withdrawal process. I understand all, all of that works, and we want to rise above the average. I just want to make sure that we are doing all that we can, because every workshop that I attended with AACT in New York, that our focus as colleges should be on the retention. We look at the head count, but it's really in the retention, because if we can retain these students and help them be successful, that helps our community. And Dr. Wilson, it just happens to fall under your report. For everyone who's looking at this, it is not student services. All of this is on the academic side as well. It just happens to be under student services. Why? Because student services is so essential to student success, just like the academic is. So it is not a reflection on you. We know you're doing an excellent job. However, it just happens to fall under your report. So don't feel like I'm just grilling you forever, but that is a passion that I have, having been here and knowing how important it is for our students in this community.
Thank you. I, I know. And I, I kind of joke, joke about it all the time, where whenever I get up here, I always get a lot of questions. But at the same time, I actually feel very proud that you are so interested to ask questions about our college and our students, and what are we doing to, to help them, because that's really what we're all here for. So just at an ending note, I just wanted to tell you that out of that 1,005 students who I told you withdrew from at least one course, 232 of them unfortunately withdrew from everything. And again, the main, the same, the main reasons were the same, you know, the same thing. So administrative withdrawals, or falling to behind, or for personal reasons. So what we want to do is, I want to go back and try to look at those 232 students who withdrew from everything, to try to find out, where are they now? Did they come back? Are they now enrolled for the spring semester? You know, what happened to them? Is there something that we can do to try to get them to, to come back to our campus? So we will continue to work, not only on our enrollment efforts, but on our retention efforts.
I wanted to thank you for your emphasis on orientation. I know that's a really difficult area in colleges and universities, to get those first-year students to come and go with that orientation. But as you say in your report here, that research has shown it's a way to maintain or increase student persistence by helping students integrate. We've talked a lot about developing personal relationships with students when they come in. So I just want to thank you for continuing that effort, to do as much as we can for orientation for our new students. I think it's really important.
Yes, thank you. And we will continue. We had 36 students who went through the SOAR orientation on the 9th of January, and 22 parents who accompanied them. So those are, you know, starting efforts to really get the word out there to our freshman incoming students that, you know, we're here, we want to share with you our resources, and what are we doing. But we really want to make sure that we're showcasing, not only your typical admissions, financial aid, and the registrar's office. We want to showcase our programs, we want to showcase some of our other services, the Counseling and Advocacy Center, you know, the, the students' health clinic. So all of those services, usually, we want them all together and be there to provide information. So we will continue to do it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had just one more question. I noticed under Director Will Coxon's report, it says KCKCC Nature Trail continued planning for the spring, and, and what's that? Because I run by that, and I just want to know what's going to be happening over there.
Sandrine is still here?
Yeah.
It's a trail that I didn't even know we had, so come to find out.
And I have a question, how many here knows we have a nature trail?
Take your bags.
Before now, before today. Many people did not know we have a nature trail. I didn't know either. I stumbled on it by accident. I was actually here with my granddaughter, and we were walking around the pond, and I'm like, huh, let's just go see the trail. And it was, I couldn't, I couldn't get in, it was so overgrown. And so we have some amazing staff and faculty on this campus, who have for years advocated for this nature trail. Ernie May, Rob Crane, and Deb Newton in, in the library, just amazing. And what we've done is we've created a committee to clean it, to clean the nature trail.
Okay, awesome.
And so we've heard stories, I mean, we went track back in the book, the Blue Book, the history book, amazing stories in that book, amazing archives in the library. And we looked back on when it started, and it was, it was here before the college was even built here. It was amazing. And it hasn't been torn down for a reason, because it has such a big impact on our community. And now, if you look at all the colleges and places around, what we have is absolutely valuable, because we have a, a nature trail in the middle of an urban area that find, I mean, the government is looking to finance to be able to allow people to be able to walk, you know, you know, do healthy stuff. And anyway, so we've got a team, and we're cleaning it up. We cleaned the first half up, all the way up to the tree, which we have the largest burl oak tree in the state of Kansas, dead burl oak tree in the state of Kansas, I guess you say. It's not alive anymore, it is dead. But it is on the ground, and it's amazing, it's huge. It's like 17-foot in circumference, or something like that. I'm not good with that stuff, but it's huge. And it's, we're, we're creating a path through it, so that way, classes can go and use it. And what the other amazing thing is, is there's an outdoor classroom in this trail. And this was created by BPU, they, we've got the original benches, we've got the original setup. It's amazing for all of our classes to be able to go in, have class outside, do specimen testings, and all that other stuff that, you know, all the classes could do, workforce, I mean, just amazing. Every class could be out there. And anyway, so we got that, that part cleared out. We have not cleared out the north end yet, we will be doing that as the weather gets better. So our goal is to have it ready by fall of 2019, where it's completely ready to go. And, and it could be for spring, but, unless you, but we definitely have the first part open, and we've got, Tech is building bridges for us, because there's two bridges that are torn down, or messed up, and they're building it, and they're going to put a little plaque on there, "Made by KCK Tech Students," their names and the faculty, it's really amazing. So we are in progress, we're meeting, we're, we're meeting with other people across the community to help with, with stuff that we can't do, and, or we don't even know about, grants opportunity, and it's just really cool. So I, kudos to our faculty and staff here at KCKCC. It takes a team to make something like this happen. They, we came out in the summer, and we were cleaning it, it was just a lot of work, but we're going to make this happen, because this, we, KCKCC is amazing. We've got a lot of amazing things that our community can access, and just other great ideas. So anyway, so that's, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
I just wish she was excited about it, that's all.
Thank you.
Great job.
And she's taking volunteers to help cut the weeds and clean up a little bit. I actually found out about the trail earlier this past summer, and Andrica came to my office and started with that same excitement, to share with me that we have this nature trail, and actually asked for myself and the rest of Cabinet to participate in a walk through the nature trail. Now, this was middle of summer, and it was like 90-something degrees out there, and very hot and humid. So we owe you a walk. So Cabinet, don't forget that we're supposed to walk through the nature trail and look. So, but it's, it's amazing that we have that.
So anybody present who's actually attended a class held at the nature trail, raise your hand.
I have.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, about five years ago, on Ride Your Bicycle to Work Day, the Wellness and Fitness Center coordinated a bicycle ride through there, which was a little dicey with the bridges, but we discovered about four deer over there. And it was midday, and we had a picnic over there.
We had a history class going out there one day, so.
And just one more FYI, in case you didn't know about that nature trail. When the street college parkway before that, the golf course was all the way embanked up next to the college. And when they were putting that road through there, they wanted to put an exit here through that nature trail. And there was so much protest and everything because of that tree. So that's why it is preserved, because for those who were here then, I don't know, they wanted, the people who were engineering, making that access to the college, the college parkway out here, they wanted to bring an, an exit ramp right through there. And Professor Ernie May and some other faculty led the way with that protest, to make sure that that area was preserved. So that's why it caught my attention, too, because I want to know what's getting ready to happen over there. Thank you.
Great history, thank you.
Another approval of Dr. Wilson's report.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Evelyn?
She voted.
I said aye.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I did a lot better than yesterday, when I got up in front of a group and I lost my watch.
But I want to congratulate you on your dance moves.
Oh, no.
You're famous now, you know that, don't you?
All right. Now we'll have a report from the Information Services, Mr. Peter Gabriel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I ask that I go in front of Delphi and Student Services next? Because I seem to have to follow something every time. No, you should have my report. Be glad to take any questions. I do have a couple of updates that are not on the report, that are not happening yet, but they've started. Media Services is actually going to start live streaming some of the basketball games.
Ooh, cool. Really?
And then we are, it's kind of been on my radar for quite a while, the last two years, three years or so, the question of why there's no telephone in a classroom. So that project's underway. We're actually, we found out, going through the process, it was cost prohibitive to use our current phone system to enable the ability to put a phone in every classroom. So we've, we're switching to a new phone system that will obviously allow us to put a phone in every classroom, and then migrate our current phone system over to this new system, and actually save the college a little bit of money in maintenance fees next year. So we look to have the system in place here the end of January, early February, and then the full hardware rolled out with a phone in every classroom at every site by the end of March, 1st of April.
Wow. Fantastic.
And everyone's email has now moved to the cloud, and that was over the break. So nearly 20,000 mailboxes migrated over the break. So I know we've had some issues. We, we'll definitely have a different report on the number of help desk calls for next month, but they were, they were expected. That was a, kind of a joke, when we talked about putting a phone in every classroom, the support desk was not in favor, because the calls will go up, but they'll get used to it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Comments, concerns? Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the Information Services report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, and we'll have our Human Resources Officer report.
Good evening.
Well, you have my report in front of you. I just want to highlight a few things. In previous reports, we mentioned that we're going to have supervisor training and get that process going. So we have identified dates, so we have training scheduled that will be required of all supervisors on the February 25th, and as well as March 18th, and we'll schedule further trainings throughout the year, but that will be required of all supervisors. So far, out of the 63 supervisors that we do have, we've had 28 enrolled in the course. We've also, previously, we mentioned making sure that we are assessing employee engagement and individuals' thoughts in terms of their employment here, whether that's as they're exiting, and also following up with new employees. So we began that process, and our first quarterly report that we have is listed here, and I just highlighted some of the areas of information that we've obtained thus far, with regards to reasons for leaving, individuals' perspective in terms of their work, as well as their supervisors. So we've had, it's voluntary, so individuals do not have to participate, but we have had a 50% participation rate in those, those surveys. We also meet individually with individuals if they do not choose to fill out the, the questionnaire form. And last, we've also sent out a survey to employees to assess their training needs. So we had participation of 127 full-time and part-time employees. So from participate, from that, we will start to identify training programs and plans based upon the needs that employees have indicated that they have in terms of training. So I open it up to any questions that you may have.
Just a comment on that survey. I wish in law enforcement, we could say people did not leave because of the quality supervision, the working conditions, and the amount of work required, and all those came back zero. So congratulations to everyone at the college. They're not bailing out on you because you're their supervisor, or, or, you know, you're, you've created such intolerable working conditions. I think that's, I think that's great. I just wondered, any lessons learned from it? I mean, it's, I was impressed by the positivity of it. I mean, people seem to be, in all three areas, pretty pleased with what they experienced here. Anything else, or anything that you about that?
No, I'm, I'm actually glad to hear that, especially coming out of just where we've been previously.
Precisely put.
Thank you. So I was, I was happy to see that we're headed in the right direction, and I hope that we can continue on that path. And that's also important, why we need to have the supervisor training, so supervisors are clear with our expectations, and managing their employees, and making sure that they're creating a, a working environment that individuals are comfortable and proud to be a part of.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I get a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Now we have our Finance and Administrative Services report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have my report in front of you, but I just want to highlight a couple of things on the financial statements for those who were not part of the Finance Committee meeting, just so you can have some explanation to some of the, the numbers there. I'm on the, I'm on the multi-colored column financial statement that has the Kansas City, Kansas Statement of Revenues and Expenses, that compares budget to actual comparisons. As reported, the, the finance, the colleges is in good financial condition, but when one looks at that and sees a $9.7 million year-to-date deficit of revenues over expenses, or revenues under expenses, you go, what do you mean, we're in good condition? I want to just highlight a couple of things on this report to qualify that. As you'll notice, based on the far-right-hand column, the percentages of budget realized so far to date, you'll see that our operating revenues are tracking at almost 58%, which is above, we're halfway through the year, by the way. And so we're, we're tracking above that 50% mark, which is a good sign. Our non-operating revenues, which are tracking at 16%, this is a typical cycle for the college. It happens every single year, where our property taxes, more specifically, don't start coming in until January. So December 31st technically is the low spot of the year, when it comes to revenue over expenses, that's where you're going to incur your largest net operating loss, because it is based on a cash basis. It's also where we're at our lowest point from a cash perspective. But a significant amount of property tax revenues are, will expect to be coming in in January, and continue to come in through the rest of the year in, in intervals. So I wanted to pin that, pin So I wanted to pin that, pinpoint that. Our expenses, our total operating expenses are tracking at 44%, just barely over 44%. And again, keeping in mind we're halfway through the year, we're tracking about 6% below that 50% mark, which is a very favorable trend. We're now just hoping that most of our departments and divisions and expenses are more front-loaded or more equal, realized equally over the course of the year and not back-loaded. And we'll be finding that out as we get through, as we continue to go through the fiscal year. But the, the point is, is more than anything else, is that $9.7 million is a, is a, is a year-to-date number, and it will start to reverse and become a positive number. We have no reason to believe at this point in time that we're not tracking to meet the budgetary goals of the institution at the, at the $2.6 million projected increase. As soon as we get to a point where projections, which will eventually appear in that forecasted column, reach a point where numbers are going to look differently than what was budgeted, the Finance Committee and the Board will be the first to know. And we'll be having some good conversations with you. Do you have any questions?
No, this is trustee Chriswell. Mr. Beach, thank you so much for your thoughtful commentary on just really how things work budget-wise, specifically when you're talking in the context of the fiscal year. Because I think it's very important that folks understand that just because a number looks, you know, like it might look on this page, that doesn't tell the whole story. So for the benefit of the taxpayers, if you will, I think it's a very important comment, or those are very important comments that you've made. So I just wanted to thank you for those.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other quick comments?
I move approval of the report.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll go to unfinished business. And we need to approve the strategic plan as presented at the December Board of Trustees meeting for the mission, vision, and strategic priorities.
Correct. At the December meeting, we handed out the, the results of what the, the work that the college had done during the fall semester and creating what is really the first half of the strategic plan. And that really drives the work that we will continue to do during the spring semester to end up by the end of the academic, the academic year with a full strategic plan. So we wanted to share the draft, mission, vision, and strategic priorities with you and allow you time to review them over the course of this last month. So if there are any suggestions to be made to make modifications to it, or if not, if we can proceed to vote on the approval of these for the college mission, vision, and strategic priorities.
Comments?
Just want to congratulate the faculty, staff, and administration. I think a really a good job well done. And you're on target to have this completed by summer, I know. And we'll be looking forward to the final, the final document. And I would move approval of the, the draft that we have in front of us.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the strategic plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now have a strategic plan in front of us.
Very good, yes, thank you very much. And, you know, our CFO, Mike Beach, has kind of been leading this charge for the institution. So I appreciate the support that he has given. And just to kind of just wrap back to our convocation, after we had our opening session, we went to the same process for the development of goals and initiatives that will help us achieve these strategic priorities. So it really is a grassroots effort from the people up. We broke into 15 different groups. And that way, we could have three groups that focused on each of the five priorities. And they put together thoughts for those goals and initiatives. So we've collected that. And we'll continue the same process that we did to start the strategic plan for its continuation and completion during the latter part of the semester.
So is the intent, then, will you be sharing this with the community? Or will you wait till the final product is finished before you begin to go to the community with it?
We will be able, we will, we will share this in final form with the community, because we do want the community's input as well into goals and initiatives that they, that come to their mind on how we can achieve these priorities. So we'll be sharing these and asking for feedback from the community also.
Very good.
Yes, thank you for that question.
All right, do we have any new business? No new business? Right. And now we will move into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters with college attorney to protect the privacy interest of the individual to be discussed. Do we know how long that, about 10 minutes?
Any anticipated action?
Can I ask one?
Yes.
Are you all going to comment from the, from the room?
Yes, we will call you back.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Yep.
We need Christina as well.
Oh, and we need Christina as well. All right, so the time is?
6:36.
Okay, we're, we're going to add a few minutes to that. And we'll make it about 6:50. Okay? All right, so we'll adjourn and meet you back here at 6:50.
With, with potential action to follow.
Can I get a motion to move into the executive session? Been moved and seconded that we move into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we'll see you at 6:50.